Good call, a nice ping order. Let's have the roll call.
Kessler?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Burden?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Binner?
Here.
Parton?
Here.
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Thanks for the occasion, we're going to back to the center.
President, please. Father, we give you thanks that we're able to come to this place and meet together tonight and consider these things your business. And Lord, we thank you that we live in a country where we have the freedom to do this tonight. We ask for your guidance and your wisdom as we consider the items before us this night that we might make decisions that would please be these things, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and his of the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start tonight with a special order of business. A, it's a presentation from our BFW presenting the Officer of the Year award. So, the FFW would like to make a presentation there.
I want to thank the city council for the opportunity to come over and do this. I'm Robin Redd, post quartermaster. I have with me our senior vice commander, Evelyn Cook, our commander, Dick Brown, and our past commander, Larry Tyson. At this time, I would like to... Justin Hinke, you've come forward. I have a certificate here, a certificate of appreciation in grateful recognition of unyielding adherence to the highest ideals of law enforcement and the remaining preserving and protecting the lawful rights of all citizens. This is our way of recognizing and thanking you.
And I saw at this time, we'd like to present you with a free steak dinner from the BFW.
Don't leave, let me get your picture. With the crew.
Oh, we'll get a good man there.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the BFW, both thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye.
Presentation, approval minutes, A, minutes, May 28th, 2019. Mr. Mayor?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the May 28th, 2019, business meeting.
Second.
Most second through the minutes, May 28th. Question? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Upstate.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Upstate.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item one, citizens to be heard. A, we have Bruce and Carol Trusson here to talk to us about a dangerous dog.
Okay.
Bruce?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk for my mom, if that's okay. Bill ain't trying to make it, he's got poison ivy. Uh, my mom's lived at 328 Sunset for, how many years? Sixty?
Since 57.
Since 1957, so, you know, that's her own home. And next door, she has a very dangerous aggressive pit bull, and a guy called him a bully. And, uh, you know, my mom's got neuropathy, so she can't go out her side door without that dog attacking the fence. I had to repair the fence once, which is her property, because he kept biting on it. And he's jumping about probably this high over the fence now. So, I'm just gonna read what my mom wrote. So, "For the last three months, the dog next door has been keeping me from going to my trash can and into my backyard. He is an aggressive and dangerous dog. He would jump and lunge, hit my fence, and has damaged it. And that was me, my son, Bruce. So, I spent two or three hours repairing it, retying the top rail, and putting rebar at the bottom, and tying it up. He would bite on the fence and looked at us, thought he would attack. Uh, he, once he got over, you know, seeing, you can probably, you know, seeing, you know, my mom would be frightened. Then he became more aggressive and would jump up, and even the guy that mows my mom's yard, Larry Sparks, the local guy, when he's mowing, he's jumping up and down, and he's kind of afraid too, you know, to my mom's yard. And, uh, anyway, I guess on May the 29th, um, Officer Scooby came out, and he said the dog was dangerous and aggressive, and we had the Officer Scooby badge 168, case number 2019020222. And, uh, you know, it just doesn't seem fair, you know? I mean, I got a video, and I've showed it to the chief, and I tried to download it to the guy in the office, I don't know if it went through or not, but you saw it. When I walked up to the fence house, he jumped about that high, you know, his head on the fence. And right there is where my mom's trash cans at, on her property, and she's got a garage, she's got the door right there, and she can't even go out, you know, she's afraid to go out her side door, afraid that that dog is gonna, you know, attack her, and he's real vicious. I mean, like I said, I got a video, I know you guys got, you don't probably have time, but the chief did see it, and so, well, you know, let the law, you know, let him take care of it, but, you know, I mean, for my mom's sake, and, you know, she feels like she's a prisoner in her own home, she lives her all her life. And, you know, the neighbors had to call whenever they, she wanted the dogs in, but every time she calls, they don't answer, and, you know, and I went over there when I first, you know, you know, I mean, it's my mom, okay? If any of you guys have a mom, and he's in my case, you probably feel the same way. I went over there, and all I told the lady, I said, "If that dog harms my mom, there'll be serious consequences." Now, that's not a threat, I said, "serious consequences." I didn't say I was gonna go shoot the dog, or poison the dog, or nothing like that. So, the husband came over and talked to me about the fence, and he was kind of laughing about it, you know, thinking, you know, and I said, "Well, what if it was your mom?" You know? So, I don't think they understand how, I mean, I know some pit bulls, I've got a friend, um, Jackie's got two pit bulls, and one's a mix, and another one's a little bitty one, they're nice as ever. But this one is really vicious, and it scares the living dog out of my mom, you know? So, you know, that's my presentation for you tonight, and like I said, off, the chief did see the video, and he, and I think even maybe Danny Binner did, um, might have seen the video, but, you know, with time, you know, I can't pass my phone around, but just believe that what the chief saw is real, and it's just, it's dangerous, you know? And if it got over that fence, and my mom's got neuropathy, we have to use a cane or a broom, and if it startled her, and she fell and broke a hip, that'd be it, you know what I mean? And, you know, we just don't think it's fair, and, you know, hopefully that, you know, you can present this to the right authorities, you know, and maybe get something done. That's all I have.
Was Chris able to download it?
No. It comes up here.
It did. I got it on my phone, but I don't know if you got time to...
Like, said he couldn't get it downloaded?
Yeah, I got it on my phone, I mean, if you wanna watch it, or, he's already watched it.
Well, chief's seen it, and Councilman Bitter, I think, you said you've seen it. Chief's seen it, and, uh, we have a copy of it?
We don't have a copy of it. I've got body cam videos from the officers over there.
Okay. And if you can get a copy, so we can have it, um, we can visit with our attorney, but, you know, we're a little bit, um, kind of stymied too, because the dog's not bitten anybody yet.
Yeah.
Yet.
Yeah.
And, um, to, there are certain things that make them dangerous as to what can be to take them into court. Uh, right now, it sounds like to me, you've got a personal suit between them for some reason, I don't know if you've wanted to go that far or not, on filing some type of suit against them to do some type of restraining order on the dog or something when you're in your yard. I don't know. I would suggest you talk to an attorney, we'll visit with our attorney, and I would suggest you truly talk to an attorney to see if something you can do civil against them than stopping the dog.
Right. The main thing is, is you saw the video, he is a vicious dog, I don't know if they walk him, maybe he don't get exercise, but if he did get over that fence, he'd bite, I mean, he would bite somebody, and then he, my mom would probably end up in the hospital. So, we're trying to prevent that, you know, and whatever we have to do, I mean, we'll let the city work on it first before we, you know, talk to attorney.
Well, I would truly talk to an attorney right now, so would you.
Okay.
Mr. Crum?
Just a couple of curiosity questions. Do you have a, is there a privacy fence or a chain link fence?
Chain link fence that my mom owns.
Okay, four foot?
Yeah, four foot.
Okay. And when you fixed the fence, did they put the dog in?
Yeah. Yeah.
Have anybody talked to them about maybe putting up a six foot privacy fence?
Well, yeah, he said he's gonna do it, but, you know, they got, they just had a baby in January, and he's working two jobs, so he says he's gonna try to put a six foot privacy fence up, but in the meantime, he said he'd try to block that corner off, you know, at least so mom could go outside, but it's still gonna attack that fence and jump up and down, and if it gets over that fence, I'm telling you, I mean, I hate to see what the consequences would be.
Well, a letter to them from an attorney may get him a little more motivated to put the fence up. I would, if I were you, truly talk on a civil matter, one, we can talk about ours, but there are only certain things we can do because of the dog is in their yard, it hasn't jumped the fence.
Yeah, but it has damage in, you know, I had to fix the fence.
Right, then you truly, you truly have a civil against him for damaging your fence. Um, so, there's limited things we can do because of truly what the ordinances say on dangerous dogs. And I know that, I don't know whether it barks, does it bark all night or anything? Or do they have it out at night?
No, it's, uh, thanks, it's, uh, the police officer came over that day, they've been keeping it in.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I think they know, it's, I mean, he was kind of laughing about it, and I mean, I just said, "Look, I don't know why you're laughing about it," I said, "You know, your dog's dangerous." I said, "It acts like it wants to get over the fence." And I said, "If it's your mom, well, how would you feel?" You know, so I'm just trying to be an advocate.
Sure. We'll review our end of it, see if there's anything else we can do.
Okay.
But I would, I would truly suggest you talk to an attorney to see if there's something civilly you can do against them for this dog and what it's doing at this point, especially with the videos and the things that you have at this point.
Right. Okay, so we just go ahead and pursue that while you guys are pursuing your...
Yeah, we'll look at ours, see if there's anything else we can do, and I would, I would too, I mean, it's up to you.
Okay.
You don't have to, but I would, if it was me, and it was a dangerous dog that way, and, um, I would probably sure have something done.
Okay.
More about it.
Like civil court deal or something?
Well, just between yourselves, there could be a civil suit against them, basically.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate you for talking.
Item two is approval license and bonds, we have none. Item three, introduction of ordinance and resolutions, we have none. Item four is no specifications, governing body announcements, any announcements. Everybody? Mr. Crum?
Going around the library over the next week. Tomorrow at 2 o'clock, they'll be having a movie matinee, they're gonna be doing Monsters and Aliens, and then on, also tomorrow, the 11th, is another Medicare seminar at 6 o'clock, so if you know somebody that's getting ready to go into Medicare, that would be helpful information for them. On Wednesday, the 12th, at 10 o'clock, a group called Laughing Matters will be there for the summer programs that they have put on. The next Lego day will be Thursday, the 13th, and that goes from 4 to 6 on the Lego Club. And then on June 17th, at 6 o'clock, is the next movie night over there, and they're gonna be watching Space Jam. And then also, H3, the 060 walks competition recently got over with, and I just want to mention that Fast and Furious was the winning team on the competitive side, and Walk the Walk was the winning team on the non-competitive side, and all the teams combined had 37,399,482 steps, that's about 18,700 miles, so basically, the teams walked, I Googled this tonight just for fun, we walked to Australia and back. So, there was a lot of exercise going on for 060 walks. And then for the school district, I did want to mention that the boys' baseball team did win the 6A state championship last week, so congratulations to them. Also had a boy placed first at the 6A track meet in the long jump. We also had another boy that took first in the shot hook and second in the discus, and one of the girls placed sixth in the javelin. We also had one boy that played in the Kansas Shrine Bowl football game this weekend, and actually, one of our band members was also selected to play in the band at that game. So, congratulations to all of them, and I also want to mention that our summer swim team, the Piranha's won their first meet last Tuesday night at El Dorado, and our first home meet will be this Tuesday against Winfield, they're the defending league champs, so it'll be a tough meet that starts at 6 o'clock over at the city pool, which Georgie's not here, did it also, I guess I'll go ahead and mention, the pool will close at 4 o'clock tomorrow for the swim meet, so we have time to get it set up and stuff, and then we'll go at 6. If you're out walking and want to stop and watch the competition, or just come watch, it's gonna be two really good teams going at it. Kids from eight and under, all from, we've got five-year-olds on our team, all the way up to 18-year-olds, so you'll see all sizes, all shapes and sizes, and it's usually a pretty good time. That's all I've got.
Okay. Ms. Perk?
Um, on Saturday, June 22nd, from 9 to 1, Pride will have a document shredding event out front here at City Hall, and it's free.
I have a senior centers, tomorrow, June 11th, they have a P2N doctor at the Hanger Education Center in Wichita at 9:30. Wednesday, June 12th, there's a fall presentation class and blood pressure check at 8:30. Also, Wednesday, June 12th, is a big dis presentation at the Advanced Learning Library in Wichita, 1:30. Friday, June 14th, seniors birthday dinner at 5:30, and Saturday, June 15th, they have a butterfly paint party, 11 a.m. and 2:30. Monday, June 17th, they have Domino's at 12:30, and then Wednesday, June 19th, they have commodity distribution at 1:00. If you're interested in those, senior center, 529-590. Item B, memo to council regarding attendance of 2018, you can see who's registered for 2019. And then C is a memo regarding a new business, it's the cutting-edge concrete cutting. And D is a email from Cox regarding the network negotiations. Item 5, old business, we have nothing. Item 6, other business, A, it's a presentation of our 2018 audit report.
Hello, everyone. My name is Teresa Seymour, I'm the senior manager with BKD. First off, I just want to thank the city for allowing us to serve as your auditors. I also want to thank Will and Janey and their staff, they make the audit about as painless as possible for us, so they're always good about getting us stuff quickly and timely, so we really appreciate that. Today, I'm just gonna talk about the audit report, the financial statement, and the management letter, so we're just gonna get right into it. So, the first thing I'm gonna talk about is the independent auditor's report, which is gonna be the first page after the table of contents. So, this is the report that BKD provides, this just states that management's responsibility is to prepare the financial statement, and the auditor's responsibility is to form an opinion on those financial statements after audit evidence is obtained. The second page here talks about adverse opinion on U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, which is GAAP. This was added, I want to say like five years ago, just to make sure readers of the financial statements knew this was not a GAAP report, that's a very specific thing. This is a regulatory basis report, so they wanted to just make that very, very clear to anybody who happened to read this report, that this is not a GAAP report. And in that middle paragraph, they talk about the, where we talk about the opinion on regulatory basis of accounting, and that's the Kansas regulatory basis, and the financial statements refer to are fairly presented, or a unmodified, or a clean audit opinion, so that's as good as it gets, so always happy to see that. Jump into the report itself, so the summary statement is gonna be on pages two and three. This is the overall activity of the city, it shows all of the funds that the city has, the beginning balances, the receipts and expenditures for the year, and then the ending balances. There was just one fund that I wanted to point out here, which was the KDHE project fund, you'll see that has a big negative balance at the beginning, that's because that activity and that fund is a reimbursement, a grant that you guys get from the KDHE for the groundwater contamination, so that was, that's why that was a negative, it's not a cash balance violation or anything like that, that's just the way that grant works, so I just wanted to point that one out. The next page, or two pages together, that's the rest of your funds, and then it goes into the composition of cash, which is just where your cash is at and what it's made up of. The next area is gonna be the notes to the financial statement, this is more of a written description of the financial statements to give you a little more information, kind of the behind the scenes of the financial statements. So, the note one is the significant accounting policies, so this talks about what type of entity you are, that regulatory basis of accounting we talked about, and then note two talks about your budget and how that's prepared, and note three talks about your defined pension plan. This is the big papers, pension liability that everybody has to show in their footnotes now, so you'll see that number there in that second part of that area, under the net pension liability. This isn't going away, so it's just gonna have to be there for the foreseeable future, so that is where that's located. Then you just have some other notes, I won't go through all of those. Nine shows your capital projects for the city, and then finally, I'll talk about note 12, which is your long-term debt note. This goes over all the debt that the city has, your general obligation bonds, your tip notes, all of that, just talks about the beginning balance additions, and then any payments, and then finally, the balance at the end of the year, and also shows the maturity schedule, so how many more years you guys have to pay on those. The next thing I'll talk about is the Schedule 1, which is the summary of expenditure, the actual budget. This shows all your funds that have a budget requirement, so it shows the certified budget, how much expenditure you had for the year, and then whether or not you were over or under that budget. A negative number is good in this regard, so all of those funds were under budget, so that's what we, again, what we like to see. The rest of the report, I won't dig into deeply into, these are the individual schedules for each one of those funds that was on the statement, so if you wanted to get a little more detail of what's going on in that fund, this is where you would find that. I'll go ahead and jump over to the management letter. So, the management letter is a required communication between the auditors and those charged with governance, it's so that we, as auditors, will tell the city council if there was any significant matters that we found while doing the audit. It talks about, that's what that first area talks about, that responsibility for the auditors. The next part talks about the significant accounting policies, again, we point out that in that note one, that's where you would find those. If there were any alternative accounting treatments, basically pointing out, again, that KMAC, that Kansas regulatory basis, again. Next page talks about the management judgment and any accounting estimates, which you did not have any. Also, we point out any financial statement disclosures that we think aren't particularly sensitive, or maybe something new that we want to point out to you, you did not have any of those this year. In the middle section there, we talk about any audit adjustments that we made, and again, we did not have any audit adjustments this year. Again, that's best-case scenario, we always want to see no audit adjustment, so very happy to see that. And then, close out here, we've got the auditor's judgment about the quality of the city's accounting policy, again, that Kansas regulatory basis instead of accounting, instead of GAAP accounting. And then finally, any other materials that we communicated to you guys, so I think, I don't know if you guys have it in the attachment, there's a management representation letter, that that's what the management of the city represents to us as being true, and then the engagement letter, we sent that out as well. So, this letter would also show if we had any recommendations, or if we had found any deficiencies, and you guys have been really good about when we give you guys something to change, you change that, so we do not have any recommendations or deficiencies this year. Also, in the notes, we would have had if you had any statutory violations, again, we did not have any of those this year either, so very good job by your staff, and again, we appreciate you guys continuing to let BKD serve as your auditor, so I can take any questions.
Questions, council? Got a nice clean audit report, so...
Yeah, very nice.
No questions, we thank you for coming in today.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming.
Scott, you have a question?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to thank Janey and Will for another great report, this seems like it comes back like this every year, and it's because you guys do such a good job, thank you very much.
Remove item B, is consideration of request to disallow fishing at Riggs Park prior to the fishing derby, which we know is on July the 4th. How long does she want to do it?
She wants to do it from June 27th through the opening of the fishing derby on July 4th.
Anyone want to make that motion?
I make a motion, we disallow fishing at Riggs Park from June 27th through July 4th.
Second.
Vote second to disallow fishing on the day you're requesting. Disagreement? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hey, Tony, do you know what the impact of the overflows at the park is on the fishing there? I mean, do we think we lose a lot of fish out when it does that, 'cause...
And I haven't heard from the public that, you know, the fishing isn't any good.
Well, they're catch and release.
Yeah.
They all go back in, don't they? I don't think they keep the fish.
No, I mean, when the, when it overflows.
Oh, you mean the water?
Yeah, when the water overflows, and like the cow skin and stuff, I just didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't heard any concerns about the fishing quality over there, but I know it happens. I know, I've seen a lot of kids actually get them from the ditch and then put them back in the lake, that's kind of a fun thing for the kids to do sometimes, but I'm sure some do make it to the cow skin as well.
Okay, I was just curious if anybody noticed anything, 'cause I know it's happened quite a bit the last couple of years, here recently. Okay, thank you.
Best paid service, please. This Saturday, June 15th, is our first Kids Day at the Hometown Market, so from 8:00 a.m. to noon, bringing the kids out, we'll have crafts and games for them to do. The horse is gonna be at Kids to Park Day, so if you want the horses, it's at Kids to Park Day.
Janey?
I have nothing.
Uh, chief?
Good evening, mayor and council, I just wanted to introduce our visiting officer this evening, it's Officer Scooby, he's here, one of our recent graduates from the academy, he's just finishing up his field training, so he'll be out there on the street, probably afternoon shift, 3 to 11, so, so you can go by.
Thank you. Hey, I've had work done.
As you may have seen, included the code enforcement breakdown in your guys' packet, the county will be conducting their household hazardous waste this Saturday in the city hall parking lot from 9 to 1. You can check our Facebook page or the county's website for what items you can and cannot bring. That's all for today.
We get all Georgie's stuff?
Yes, I'm also Georgie now. This week's Food Truck Thursday will feature Smoking Diner, they will be at city hall parking lot from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m., and then also new this week, they'll be at the Hack parking lot in the evening from 5 to 8, so I think she heard a lot of comments about doing some evening food trucks. Due to the weather, Kids to Park Day was rescheduled to this Saturday at Colmia Park from 10 to noon, it is free for all ages, and will feature a petting zoo, horseback rides, and outdoor games, among many other things. Also, this Friday is free movie night at Riggs Bandstand, they will be showing The Miracle Season, for those of you who have not seen it, bring your tissues, food, lawn chairs, and blankets as well. Also, registration forms for the Fourth of July parade are available online and at the activity center. And then, this Friday as well, the City Night with the Hayesville Aviators, first pitch is at 7 p.m., and the first fans I hear will receive a free Aviators koozie. It's all virtual.
Okay, thank you, Tony. And thank you for Georgie. Okay, item 8, appointments, A, Tom Coleman, 149 Wayne, it's a reappointment to the park board for a two-year term. Mr. Crum?
I make a motion, we have you appoint Tom Coleman from 149 Wayne as a...
I make a motion. We have you appoint Tom Coleman from 149 Wayne as a reappointment to the park board for a two-year term.
Second.
Motion second to approve the appointment of Tom Coleman. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Danner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And item B is Kelly Sullivan, 556 Caleb. It's also a reappointment to the park board for two years. Mr. Crum?
I make a motion. We'll go ahead and allow you to appoint Kelly Sullivan, 556 Caleb, a reappointment to park board for a two-year term.
Second.
Motion second to approve the appointment of Kelly Sullivan to park board. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Danner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And item nine, it's off-agenda citizens to be heard. We have with us Nona Van Dam. So, Nona, if you'd like to come forward again and state your name and address and things for the record. She says she's wanting to talk about the party and the O6O.
My name is Nona Van Dam. I reside at 6451 South Ward Parkway. I just have a comment about the events the last weekend of April. I think it was the Hayesville O6O Party, which is going to be an annual event. And I'm not sure if Shirley addressed this with the city. She has a fundraiser every, well, the past six years over at the old part. What do you call it? Downtown?
Historic district?
The what?
Historic district.
Historic area, yeah. Across the street from the library, she does this fundraiser for the special needs children for four different schools in the area. I know two of the schools. One is campus, and one is a prairie, and I forgot the other two. This year, she was hit pretty hard. She always has at the last weekend of April, because May gets into prom and all kinds of events. But she took a big hit by about $1,000 because the city bumped their party and car show to the same weekend as her. And I want to try to find a way to help her come up with those extra funds. She got $2,000. That was like about $500 per school. So, now she only has $250 per school for the next year. And she has a lot of leftover crafts, paintings that the children did themselves. And so, they know, or they will know, that things didn't go well for them. I know that the weather can be bad, and the city doesn't change their annual garage sale, but it would be nice if they could go back to when they had it earlier in April, so that they don't step on her toes. She's been doing it for about six years now that I know of. And that's my comment. Thank you.
She also, and I know we talked, I talked to her about this previously, soccer was going on, and I, at that point, told her she really need to be advertising down at the soccer fields, too, to get those parents to stop, because when we've got 300 soccer kids down there, she really needs to be doing that. And I've already visited with her about this problem, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Item 10, executive session. We have none. Item 11, bills be paid. A, bills be paid for the first half of June. Does Ewer?
Yes, we'd like to make a motion that we pay the first half of June bills.
Second.
Motion second to pay the first half of June bills. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Danner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item 12, intended. We have nothing. Item 13, council items, council concerns, council? Anything? Mr. Thompson?
Tony, we got a pothole at 1400 Block to Willow Street.
Okay.
That was turned in, so that's all I have.
It's right between Apple and...
Apple, yeah.
Tony, I'm just gonna ask, with all the water and the rain that we've had and everything, what are we doing to combat mosquitoes?
Typically, we don't do anything. I mean, we have some drainage ditches. Like, we have some issues that you'll see in the action request form where it's not flowing 100% properly. So, those areas, we will treat with some mosquito pucks. But generally, we don't go, we don't spray or do any of that.
Well, no, I'm talking about like standing water, because like the underneath grand there behind where I live, that pools, you know, that puddles up there, and then it stays there until it gets stagnant and all that kind of stuff. I know we can't do anything about it because we had a lot of rain, but, I mean, it's a feeding ground for mosquitoes.
Basically, the way we handle it is when we get something reported to standing water, then we'll go out if it's on city property and throw some pucks in.
Okay.
We've got those barns around pucks, and I'd suggest to anybody that has standing water in their yard somewhere.
Yeah, exactly.
To get some of these and put in those or get rid of the standing water. They are bad this year for, I think, even worse this year than in the past because of all the water there. Yeah, we'll put those pucks in and see if we can get them at least to die down at least.
All right, that's all I have.
Council action requests for dates? Anything we want to talk about there?
In regards to 328 Hungerford, the property owner has been notified of their code violations. They have taken care of some of the items, but they still have some concrete left to do code enforcement. We'll continue to follow up. On 1126 East Grand, is reported as a white car, not tagged, parked in the grass. The car is now tagged, and from what I was told earlier in the week, was parked in all-weather surface, but I need to double-check with what Councilman Burden said prior to the meeting. But they are also in violation of grass over 12 inches that has been mowed. Sumy Street, the city will apply for the CDBG grant to address pavement and drainage issues of that neighborhood. We will continue to address any regular maintenance of that area. And then 907 Carla, there's a large amount of water that was being pumped. I don't know if any of you drove by that area. A lot of the subpumps in the area were running from the rise in the groundwater around people's basements. So, we did get a few concerns about the Marlin drainage, flowing water out of it. Staff addressed the area of Marlin and Freeman that we were able to get to during the rain. When it dries out, we'll address it further. There's an area between Jane and Moy where it runs east and west, where it's got some buildup that we'll take care of. I drove by before the meeting. There, I did not see any subpumps running, and the ditch was fairly dry, so.
Is it dried out in the other part?
Yeah.
I know when you got at Marlin, it took about half of that ditch to be drained.
Yeah.
Any questions anywhere there, council? Seeing that, we'll go to item 14, adjourned.
Mayor and Council make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Danner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.